Okay, we're on. So, uh, we're here for the October 30th Joint Town Council Board of Ed Workshop/Finance Meeting, and we have four agenda items. Not a lot of presentation material. I guess we might have something on the, from the Board of Ed on eight corners, the eight corners update, but we thought we would read us in a couple of items having to do with perhaps developing a joint statement or a recommendation to our respective boards and councils on targets to be used for metrics for the coming budget year, fiscal year 2024, kind of the first issue. So it's just a discussion item. There's no, uh, no agenda or materials, just sort of talking about how people feel about that. And we had a detailed presentation last time, especially going through the Board of Ed numbers and, so I don't know whoever would like to lead off on that, does he, Cap?
I wasn't here, so.
Did you guys take it back to the full board to discuss? Cause I, so you guys presented to us a theoretical goal. We all agreed that that doesn't necessarily need to be set right now. And I felt like that we left it, that you would check, check the temperature of the entire board. If that's not the case, I think that's completely fine. I think a good objective for this conversation is, do we both go back to our respective bodies and say, hey, this is what we're thinking? Do we get?
I think because Sarah wasn't here at the last meeting, we decided, and Peter wasn't here, so we tabled the discussion on first versus second reading.
Yeah.
And so I think before, we were gonna bring it back to our respective board. We wanted to have that.
Okay.
Be part of the conversation.
So that's really, the second agenda item is to talk about the calendar and what we would expect in terms of objectives and output for the first and second readings. What are the purpose, you know, what are the expectations for those meetings and approximate timing so that we, we felt that we wanted to make sure we were setting reasonable
Yeah.
Expectations for, for both groups on that. And it was some, uh, some feelings were expressed about last year and in the past, we've kind of put a lot of pressure on the Board of Ed because they don't know what they don't know at certain times, and we're still expecting them to come forward with an answer. So that was really the reasoning of that, of that one. So, as I recall, what we had talked about was, it seemed like there was developing consensus around agreeing on using mill rate again and adding net expenditure and percentage, net expenditure increase.
For the school side.
For the school.
Is that just for the school or is it not?
Ultimately also for the town.
Okay.
And, uh, so is, is there a need for more discussion or is there, you know, I'd just like to hear how people feel about that at a high level, at a high level of consensus? Is that something that people feel they would be able to support and then I suppose take back to their respective committees and get it endorsed so we can bring it forward?
Yeah, so I'll start. I, I maintain that I don't, I don't personally think the mill rate of three percent's the best goal, but I am, I'm standing down. I think that it has its merits and that's been articulated. So moving off of that, I think that what we had discussed last week was a very, I feel like it was, has some very positive reception to it. So as far as I'm concerned, I don't need, I don't personally need more discussion surrounding it. I feel like it was a great balance between giving the school board a little more of a compass and letting us articulate to the public that, you know, hey, the school number isn't necessarily the three percent. So where I walked away from that meeting was, let's wait to get Peter's input and Sarah's input, cause they weren't here, and then we'll go. So I think Peter and Sarah are the ones that were, yeah.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm all done.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
Can I just, just point a clarification? Peter, you can go first if you want, but the, so here it says mill rate. Was it, were you guys, did you agree on the three percent mill rate or just mill rate as a?
Well, I think we agreed on the mill rate. I don't think we confirmed yet what the percentages would be either for the mill rate or other metrics. Should we, you know, feel there's a consensus behind adding a different one. So that, that's in spite of the fact that we had a detailed presentation from the Board of Ed. I think from a, from a governance standpoint or a process and approval standpoint, we would probably wanna go through additional discussion and approvals on that. So I, I, I don't know if we're able or willing to confirm numbers associated with the metrics from this committee. So that's, that's just sort of my, you know, question I would have. Totally comfortable with confirming the metrics, but not quantifying them yet.
So I, I think the math that we were presenting at the last meeting was based on the idea that we had been given the three percent target in the past few years.
Correct. Yeah.
And what was the school side change that was able to drive down to that three percent?
Yeah.
So if we are going with a no numbers approach to the large group, then we would have to say, you know, this would be the way that we would do the math.
Yeah.
And depending on the target, we'd work our way backwards.
And I think we were okay with sticking with the three percent goal. I think it was more, we didn't, I think April expressed concern last time. We just didn't wanna, the school board, I think you guys threw out 4.45. That was very.
Five point six one.
Okay, five.
That's our net budget goal.
2.12 or something, you know, but it was.
Stop. I've, I've got it here. I'm getting it again.
I guess it was more, it didn't make, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts. It's early. I, I, I think that's what Don was saying. I think from the council side, I don't see us moving off that three percent goal, but I could be wrong. I mean, that goal's not gonna become two percent all of a sudden, is it? Or?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I guess a question I had in, cause, cause I wasn't here last time. I mean, so Tom, I think this is kind of directed at you. So if, if, I thought, I think you guys arrived, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, what'd you guys, was it five?
Five, six, one.
Five, six, one. And that's because you look back historically and that's about what it's been?
Correct. It was the geometric mean, which I'm not gonna pretend to know how to fluff it up, but Kate can give you a dissertation on that.
April and I.
So my question on that though was, so if, if that is 5.61, what does the municipal side have to be to get to the three percent? That was the part of the equation I didn't know. And then I, in the past, what we've had, which we haven't had at this point in these conversations are, what, I mean, we've called them the past drivers. What unusual things do we know? And I know for the town, there's gonna be some unusual things. I mean, we have the first CEA TIF payment that's gonna come out of our revenue for the, cause there'll be appraised, what, Tom? They'll be in the April appraisal, right? Wherever they got developed over there.
Yeah, it wasn't tremendous value as of the first. Next year will be the notable change.
Right. But it'll be next year's, it's the budget we're working on, right?
Yeah.
And so that's gonna be a big revenue outflow. It's 40% of whatever that value is.
Right. And that value didn't exist before. So it's, it's a percentage of the number that we're not accustomed to or not counting on. But there'll be service provision costs that we have that we didn't, so.
But we'll still have it. But the problem becomes, which is gonna be the age old question, we will still have the town services we have to provide, which will drive your line item budget. And we've always had a dollar of tax revenue to offset those costs. So as you develop the budget, as we develop the budget, it's gonna be, if we pay out 40% of that increased value, does that create a, a net deficit for you when you put together your budget? So that's.
The question we're taking with 60 cents rather than a dollar to offset costs.
Yeah.
Right.
Quite certain.
And that, that may be true or not, but I think that's, that's something. Then we've got, we're likely to have, we're gonna lose the Walmart Sam's revenue.
The abatement.
The abatement that we just negotiated.
Yeah.
And it's likely there's going to be an outcome for Piper Shores. All of those things are pretty significant dollars.
But I have a question to those abatements. So that wouldn't, we wouldn't take the charge of the full abatements. It would just be the first year charge, the 2021 portion of that.
Correct.
Okay.
And I, it, correct, I, I know there's a, there's a 30-year projection for the downs or, and I think we're expecting somewhere, this, I don't wanna throw out a number recklessly, but I feel like it was about a hundred thousand dollars the first year, a hundred twenty thousand dollars?
It's in the, it's in the documents.
Yeah, right. And I think it took four years for us to get to zero, right? Or three years. So.
I don't remember anymore.
Yeah.
Neither do I.
Yeah. But I'm saying that those projections of at least at minimum, we should, they have been made so we can at least.
And, and the problem is though, is that in those projections, the problem became the first things are gonna be built, residential.
Yeah.
Which is where we don't usually collect enough revenue. And that's what we're gonna be giving back.
Yeah.
Where we start to turn the corner.
Yes.
Is when the commercial comes online.
Yeah, right. But I think that the projections accounted for that. That's all I'm saying.
Right. But it was, it was a longer, so we just, so as we think about this, at some point, and then I don't know if there's any additional revenue on the school side for special, I think last year there was some adjustment to the, so, so in the past, we just kind of have a list of, okay, what are the unusual things that we know are coming? They're gonna put pressure on the budget. What does that do? How does that get allocated between the two, the two areas? And then what does that look like? So.
Key variables.
Yeah, drivers or whatever it may be. So that would be helpful in trying to set that net margin goal is to understand some of those. Cause I think, Tom, it's gonna be, my guess is that if, if it's 5.61% your net budget, even though you have excise tax, it keeps producing for you. And so I think it'd be important for you just to weigh in, just say, does that work for you or not, as you look ahead and what you need?
Well, we did the same exercise. We looked at to fiscal year 15 and, and actually beyond that.
A five year and a 10 year.
That five year and 10 years. So the five year average net budget increases 2.43 and the 10 year average was 2.59.
Okay.
Compared to 5.61.
Okay.
And it's worth noting, with the exception of one year, in spite of those increased costs on both the town and the school side, with the increased valuation, we've been able to meet the budget goal of less than three percent of increase in tax rate.
Yeah.
With the exception of one year. So just be your 18.
So I guess a long-winded way of saying, you guys, it sounded like you arrived at three-ish is still the target for the mill rate.
I think we were operating under, there are a few of us were concerned, probably just me now, think about, about the three percent mill rate goal. And then I believe that you two and, and other counselors have articulated very well why it is a good goal. It's not perfect, but it is a good goal. So I think we said, okay, let's keep that, but how can we make that easier for both bodies?
For them to deliver.
Correct. For the school and for the communication to be better. So I think the solution to that was, if we could reverse engineer their goal.
Right, which sounds like.
Correct. So I, I don't think our three percent mill rate that we've been doing for the last six years was even in the discussion once. It was pretty clear that, okay, we're gonna use that again.
Yeah, we used it as a, as a, for the working example.
Correct.
But I don't think we either confirmed it or rejected it.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
At this point. So I, the thing that, it just keeps rolling around in my, in my head is, uh, you know, unforeseen things, you know, there are other, what, what are other events that could happen? You know, and it mainly from the debt side, I'm trying, I'm, you know, trying to anticipate what those might be or, or, you know, expense related replace debt. If, for example, we do something with a community center or whatever, those kinds of things would have a tremendous impact on the assumptions we've discussed so far.
Well, I think if, you know, Peter mentioned three uncertainties that are essentially a loss of revenue, then that's just gonna put downward pressure on, that's, that's for Tom to deal with.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I, I mean, I'm, I mean, cause that's going to, that's going to make the three percent goal harder and more difficult
Yeah.
To reach for Tom. So a, a reaction to that loss in revenue would be to actually increase the goal of three percent, and I don't see, foresee that happening. So I guess that would be my point, would be the point would, the appropriate reaction to all this uncertainty of the loss of revenue would be, oh, okay, then our goal's four percent increase. Cause we have to offset that plus, right? And I don't think that's ever gonna happen with our council. I don't think we're gonna say, oh, by the way, after last year and the reval that we're gonna say, oh, we're gonna increase that goal to four percent. So I guess my point is, Peter's stuff is valid, but that's a headache Tom can deal with if we're gonna set the.
Well.
And from the school side, like I would be hard pressed to say that we're gonna develop our budget contingent on a bunch of things that are floating around that are uncertainties on the town side.
Yeah.
Just because we do have to build a budget, like we, that, that reflects our needs independent of whether or not the town is at a loss of revenue this year.
Well, but.
And that's not to say that when the two pieces come together, Peter, it's not to say when they come together that it won't, that we're gonna miss the goal. But I would rather put forth a budget that represents what this, what the school needs and then discuss the reasons why we're gonna be above that three percent goal. Unless it was something that you could say right now, you know, we know that everyone needs, everybody needs to tighten their belts across the board, and this is gonna be a directive for every department and, and, but that's not, we're not able to do that.
Well, but that, but that's where I was going, saying, so, so if we really are committed to one town and one budget, there have been times when the municipal side has pulled back on things or not. I, you know, some of the public safety folks didn't get raises one year to try to make the numbers work. And that's just, that's what I was trying to set up going in this year. We have got some things that are beyond Tom's control. I mean, you know, the, I mean, the Walmart Sam's piece. So it was my roundabout way of asking, is the town this year gonna need?
Okay.
Do we need to tighten the belts across the board? If we need to tighten the belts across the board.
That makes more sense. Sorry, I didn't quite.
I agree.
Okay. How do you do that? And, and again, this kind of jumps ahead to the other conversation we're gonna have. Again, I, I hear that, you know, in the past, what we presented is what we think we need or want, and then, and then try to go on the treasure hunt to find how do we get from there back to where we get back to three percent in a week's time, which tends to be really stressful. And again, what we had talked about, Tom's model has been the town side is whatever goals are set, deliver that number, but then talk about what is not gonna be done. So, I mean, Tom, Tom has delivered things in the past saying, here's the budget that meets the numbers, but we need three more, you know, police officers, and here's why. And then the departments come forward and they make their case for why that is a good thing for us to think about investing in. So it's, it's the model. Wanna change the model of how we do it? And, and so I thought we were trying to gravitate to that type of model of saying, here's the numbers that deliver what we've said, but there's some real shortfalls of things we can't do.
Unmet needs.
So I have an actual, so I have like a logistical question, I guess.
Uh-oh, you closed your.
She's closing.
Let me put down my tent.
Stop, 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 stop. Hey, I've taken a lot over here. And now I've totally lost my train of thought. If, if, if Tom, if we deliver our budget, the superintendent and Tom work together closely for the month of March, Tom has an idea of where the school is gonna come in, you know, we, we're all scrambling in those final weeks. Whose decision is it to present a budget that hits the three percent goal? Is it Tom's discretion? I'm literally asking. Is it Tom's discretion to say, in order to present the town council with a three percent mill rate increase budget, I have to tell the school that they need to take $250,000 out of this tonight?
That's a good question.
No, I, my answer, I think, is no. I mean, I think what we were trying to get to would be one town, one budget, that I think, Tom, you can talk, I mean, the models in the past is that somehow there's just a dialogue that takes place, and maybe the dialogues at this table. How do we come together and present to the community a number that meets whatever target? And we haven't even talked about whether, I mean, maybe we changed the target, but, but the concept at a 30,000 mile view. And so it would be, how do both parties come to the table and somehow figure out how we can get there? At least talk about the choices. I don't think it's.
I just don't understand.
When you say in the past, what do you?
Literally just don't understand the logistics of doing it.
Cause we, it's last year. So what do you, when you say in the past, is, are you referring to what?
I don't know, Tom, maybe. I mean, haven't, haven't, haven't you and the superintendent somewhat in the past worked as, as April had suggested, as you get closer and you kind of know where the numbers are?
Yeah, I certainly exert control and authority and direction on my direct staff from the town side. And, but I don't see it my role to direct cuts on the, on the school side. That's not my responsibility. So we're all working favoritously up to the final hours. I often don't see the final school budget proposal until a couple of days before the books are calling in frankly. So in spite of the fact that Sandy and I will be in conversation, that is literally right up to the wire. And so we simply fold that in and then we see the impact literally hours before you all see it.
Well, yeah.
And I just don't know, like how, given that that is the scenario that we know is going to play out, I just don't see how we can work better toward a goal that we can't, that we don't have the final calculation until all the pieces are on the table in front of us.
Doesn't this have a lot to do with what the expectation is at first reading versus second reading?
We're, we're more moved into.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Are we getting to that question? Because I think in, in the past, to Peter's point, we have collaborated very well, but at first reading, we've come out with a proposal that doesn't meet the target on many occasions. Last year was the first time. It was like, nope, sorry, we're, we're, we're going for three percent today. And I think that we really need to be clear, which way is it? It doesn't have to be three percent at first reading, because that is going to involve a different approach for Tom and Ruth and me and Sandy.
And I think it comes down to a trust factor that we are in this together, that through the course of budget review, that proposals are gonna be heard and understood and maybe added back in, and the end result is over the goal. My sense is that the folks on the school side have had some concern that, you know, they, they wanna make sure the starting point includes everything they think is, is necessary to the extent that they know it at the time. And that's certainly informed over time as well. As Peter said, I've typically taken the approach of trying to meet the goal at first reading, and then making a very clear argument. And the finance committee has been receptive to my staff to make those arguments, you know? These are the sorts of things that, that aren't in this budget. And sometimes we're able to fund them and sometimes we aren't. It's a, it's a different approach.
Can I just, just clarify one thing though, Tom? When you say you've tried to meet the goal, how can you know if you've actually met the goal if you haven't seen our point? So when you're going to present.
I can't possibly, that, I, I don't.
Okay.
All I can control is what I can control. So.
Exactly. So you're kind of looking at your net budget numbers the way that we've been talking.
So I think what Tom's saying, that what he delivers on his side of the house is something that's close to the mill rate target, whatever that is.
Yeah. And the general thumb, in the final analysis, the school's net budget increase can be less than five percent, around five percent ideally. And ours is less than three percent. When you factor in the valuation and the final analysis, that's how we've consistently demonstrated over time, we meet the goal in the end. So when I say I'm meeting the goal, it's, it's for, for the things I can control.
For the expenditure increase.
And then, as Peter said, in, in certain budget seasons where there are particular challenges, particularly with revenue loss on the school side, that's been the biggest thing to deal with, we've had to go deeper. And, and those extra things aren't funded and we've actually cut further to get us to a point.
That's what I would like to understand, maybe from Kate and Tom, is if we were going to, to meet the goal, meaning the three, if it's three, the three percent mill rate combined as a step, as a school and town at first reading, what would need to change for your process?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, exactly. Right. That's what we're trying to get.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
What needs to change.
Tell, tell us why that's bad.
You tell me, right?
Or tell us why it's more difficult or why it changes.
Cause I think it's coming across, like the school doesn't want to meet the goal. I, I just don't know how to meet the goal.
Right. So I think that was part of the conversation this year we're gonna try to have early is.
Right.
You know, I mean, my only learning after doing this for a long time and a lot of budgets that didn't pass and are really ugly, as everybody knows, the ugly stuff that starts up. If we give a goal and we don't deliver that at first read, before we even can have conversations, folks are off and running. And that's what's always created sort of that tension. Last year, it wasn't done. It wasn't pretty, but once, but once we delivered that, it stayed quiet for a while so we could get through our deliberations on how we were gonna navigate to get there.
Yeah, the only instinct we made happened at first reading.
Yeah.
It was more shock and awe.
You didn't have this conversation, right? Yeah. And that's all I think we're, we're trying to agree on, is what those definitions are.
But I think there's a perception though, I'm sorry, there's a perception that if, and I've seen this also called first and second passes with, with budgets. They typically, you know, folks come in high and then they get whittled down to a lower number. So the thing that was different this past year was that we didn't approve the higher number of the first pass from the school. We approved a number that was equal to what we thought would deliver three, three percent.
And add stuff back in?
And then add it in to get to the second pass. And that, that is a, was a huge process change, huge mindset change. And, you know, I think we can debate whether that was, you know, productive or not, but I, I just don't know how you develop budgets, you know, without, you know, trying to be clear about whether you, you know, how serious are you about a first pass or otherwise it's, we don't really care and it's just, you know, we're gonna do the fighting at the end.
Well, so I would, I've said this before to Tom, and I, to me, I think it's, it actually ends in a, in a more robust budget if you do it the way Peter has suggested and the way that we did it this year. It is easier, it is easier than the first headline is that the goal is met, that the goal is met, and then everybody's happy that people said and did what they would do. And then you can say, okay, we can move, we need to move off this because we have to staff a new public safety building and we're far short to fire men or fire women. So I would argue that if everybody's ultimate goal is to get the most robust needs, we, the budget was passed by three to one margin this year. That wasn't a mystery. That was because people were satisfied with the fact that the, the quote goal was met. At the end, we added in, I think somewhere in the, in the neighborhood of 20,000 extra dollars in expenditures.
Small adjustments, really.
Right. And so when, when we look historically at why does the budget fail repeatedly, it's because trust is perceived, I'm not saying, but it's perceived to be broken right out of the gates. And so to me, it shouldn't take too much calculus to understand, okay, well, what was different? And I don't think that doing a three percent goal and then up presentation means that Tom is going against essentially his, you know, what, his, oh, do you take an ultimatum on this? What do you take?
What, what are you required to do?
Science contract.
Contract. Yeah. So I did, that's, that's my piece. So I, and I, and I guess it's really hard for us to understand, like why, you know, and I think from our mind, we're like, why aren't Sandy and Tom talking every day and saying, okay, this is where we're at? And I understand it doesn't work that way, cause you're two separate departments. But I think from our perspective, it's.
You know, what I've heard from school colleagues in the past, and we can use last year's example.
Yeah.
You two lived through that, and all of us did, with the exception of Sandy. You know, there were these exorbitant specialized costs and some other things that I don't think we had any choice. These are, these are legal mandates you need to meet. And there was a feeling, I think, that they would be irresponsible or remiss by not putting those on the table, including those in the budget. Those are the realities of running a public school system in this town, given the circumstance. So I think what you're suggesting for us, for them to have met that goal, they would have left big chunks out and arguably not met the needs to educate our students. So I think that's an, it's certainly uncomfortable and it might be a responsible position to ask the school to take. And I'm just using last year's example.
Yeah.
I have more flexibility on my side. You can choose not to hire the fire, fireman. It's gonna cost us more in overtime and slightly slower response time. But that's, that's a bit different than 20 year, 60 new kindergarteners showing up on day one and expecting to have a seat to sit in.
But was the, was the, only on that point, was the feeling on the, on the school side that you were meeting basic needs that were level services would have been delivered with the first read number?
If we, we didn't know, now go back and, and think about what the amendment was, it was never clear to the school department what portion of that reduction the school was supposed to have met.
You didn't identify where the reductions would be from.
So we didn't, so, so we didn't take that, we didn't take any set number back from, from our budget. So I can't answer that question.
I remember that now. Yeah, you did change your number.
That wasn't, again, it's a process. I mean, two things, Tom, I'd, I'd come back and That wasn't, again, it's a process. I mean, two things, Tom, I'd, I'd come back and, you know, present that a little differently. At the first read, when it was three percent, when it did include the special needs that we needed to do, we still arrived at three percent. What it, what it, what it did is it, it caused everybody to go back and say, what are the things that you need to do? What, what do you need to do more of and what do you need to do less of? That's part of a budget process. I think in the past, the working relationship had been if we needed to identify numbers, I mean, I can still go back and it was a two third, one third ratio. That it was a negotiation between you as town manager and the sitting superintendent to say, okay, here's the bogey we got to come up with. How are we going to go back and propose how to do that? So that, I mean, that, that's, that was a process that had been used several years. It was some more clarity about where it was going to come from, but I think what we're trying to do last year is to try to create that working relationship. But if I hear, so it sounded like you guys, just because I wasn't there, it sounds like you guys, the 5.61, which is where we've been historically, it sounded like you guys were comfortable?
We hope so. I mean, this is, we, our special education costs were, like Tom said, I mean, we couldn't have forecasted that or predicted that. And if we have another year like that where our, you know, unforeseen costs go up, there's a chance that we won't hit that 5.6. We, 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 we need a little bit of flexibility. So, so we had said, you know, we don't know yet how the enrollment numbers are going to change for kindergarten. And like, that's one of these bigger pieces that is kind of up in the air. If it turns out that, you know, in order to keep enrollment numbers that are comfortable for kindergarten, that we have to add a teacher, that's $75,000, that's, you know, we have to, we have to have.
But you don't really know that until, I understand, late, later in the year, even after the question.
Well, we try and use, yeah, we, we, and, and by the time we are forming the, the budget book and getting the first reading ready, kindergarten registration, like, there's, it's at least circulating out in the, in the community. And we have at least some rough numbers through the month of April to forecast how many incoming kindergartners we're going to have.
But folks are moving there, typically moving into spring and getting, you know, getting kids.
Yeah, and we, what do we say between 10, we, we.
About 15% maybe that come in after.
15%, I was going to say between 10 and 15% in addition to what, exactly. So in addition to whatever we accept in our initial registration, we add between 10 and 15% for September.
I think to Don's point, I mean, this is why I keep fixating on first and second reading because for us, there's always so much that happens between first and second reading. The first week of April is actually kind of late and it's great. It's later than we used to do first reading. But even then, you don't necessarily have as good numbers on some of those outside sources, whether it be revenue sharing or subsidy or insurance costs or what have you that are driven from the outside world, including enrollment, until you get to second reading. So for me, it's always been sort of a, I think Peter said, you, you start high and you, and you are able to whittle it down. Sometimes, yes, sometimes you.
Well, I know.
Have to whittle it up because something changed to the, to the negative for you. So that's why I keep sort of worrying about the timeline because the further you go into the process, the better your numbers can be.
We've long talked about the first headline that's written, I mean, the way our budget process works, there's a budget article written after presentation.
A minute.
That first.
And then that, that's the headline that stands for six or eight weeks.
And I think that speaks to Peter's point.
That's exactly right.
Our success last year was that first headline, six percent.
Well, we also, we, I think it said that we had.
Not last year, it was three percent. I think that in large part led to the success.
Right.
So to, to, to your point, Paul, I think it is a communication issue.
Right.
One way around that, and they overcomplicate it, but is to have multiple metrics.
Right.
I mean, what we know, history is pretty clear, is if the school comes in, even at first reading, at less than six percent net budget increase, and the town comes in less than three percent, history suggests we're going to end up tax rate less than three percent. And we can communicate that as first reading expectation.
Right.
And at the end of the day, taxpayer, you know, we are going to get here and we've got to track our improvement.
That's a great point.
So I think now we're getting a little more refined, I think. I like, I like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think communicate both those metrics, that our goal at first read is whatever we put on the table, we think it's going to drive a three percent mill rate. The expectation is a net whatever you guys came up with last time, the 5.6?
5.61.
Five, two? Five.
Six, 5.93.
5.93.
Well, at, at the end, right.
Yeah, when it was all done.
So, so really what we're saying is the goal for first reading is expenditures and the goal for second reading is three percent mill rate?
Exact, right. Essentially, yes. How do we articulate that? But yes, right.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean.
Summary?
I mean, I think the communication is that we think our, that net number will be 5.61, Tom's will be 2.1, what'd you say, Tom? Nine?
Four.
2.4. We think that's going to drive a three percent mill rate. That's what we'll deliver. We'll deliver those metrics at the first read. And then we will tweak, if we need to tweak from, there may be ups and downs between that and the second read, but at least the headline will be, you know, the teams delivered what we committed to. And we need to go back and you need to make sure everybody in, you know, your board agrees and everybody in our board agrees.
It's, it's materially no different. It just adds a little more detail associated with it.
Well, it isn't, isn't, because you also, I mean, if you think of it like this year, with the new value of the beacon coming on and stuff, you, you're forced to put those high, those mid-low high numbers and we're forced to react to those mill rate numbers, right? And there's a lot of uncertainty on those. And then two weeks later, when we get the, the beacon comes in and what have you, we had a much more refined number. So if, if we hold, if the three percent isn't, if the three percent is the, isn't what we're, because it's, it's a moving target at first reading. It really is. I mean, your range of mill rates on those budget presentations is significant. So if you go net expenditure in the first reading, it, it isn't, it is different. I mean, sure, for your budgeting process, maybe this is just semantics and it doesn't matter to you, but for us as decision makers, it makes a lot more sense.
I mean, if, if we could get away from projecting mill rate in, at budget presentation at first reading, that, that would be terrific.
Yeah.
But we've never been able to do that. It's a sustainable interest in the number.
Well, I think that's because that's the number people care about, right?
That's the pocketbook.
Yeah, but, but if, I, I like the idea of saying, we set the goal that the school would have this net budget increase and the town would have this net budget increase. And historically, as you said, Tom, this has been able to get us to a three percent mill rate increase and we don't expect that anything else will change and, and that's what we're looking for. But we have a more nuanced way of saying.
As I think back to the 10-year history that I have with schools, I mean, historically, the problem has been free fall of revenue.
Yeah.
In terms of just the volatility, that, you know, there's certainly expense pieces. Last year was having this anomaly where it was expense driven because we've, we've actually stabilized. We've bottomed out.
Actually got revenue last year.
We got some back.
Yeah.
And, and that stability is going to continue. I don't expect anytime soon we're going to creep out of the minimal receiver status. So, you know, the likelihood of us continuing to have these big expenditure surprises, yeah, it's there. But I tend to think that's going to be, that was more unique to last year. Maybe I'm wrong about that. So my point is, I think you're going to be able to meet that less than six percent pretty easily, given the fact that the revenue side has stabilized.
We'll go ahead and keep going.
If you're looking at the net number.
For a first pass net expenditure target.
And, and again, I think the key is the communication to our community. If what we say is, here's the goals we're going to hold ourselves measurable to the first read, we'll deliver those, then if it doesn't produce what we need, then we will make the appropriate adjustments.
I'm very comfortable with that.
Yeah.
From here to the second read, but at least we deliver out of the gate what we all agreed, we thought were fair and reasonable ways to present the budget. If there are extenuating circumstances where there's a wicked shortfall or there's a huge spike in enrollment, those are things then that we can talk about and say.
Yeah, in public and.
In public and, and say, and so we in good faith, you know, met the goals we set. And then we're going to then discuss what we may need to do around that.
The only downside, I'll just put it on the table, is that at the inception, the three percent goal was selected for number reasons. Not the least of which, it was a single number that seemed to have a level of receptivity, you know, nothing more than three percent. Now we're adding a couple more numbers and whether that makes the communication job that much more difficult. Because we haven't been able to communicate the three percent very well, have we?
Because it's so far downstream. And that's, I mean, at least we're going a little bit more upstream on the first read.
Well, the good news is this group needs to have mutual expectations. I mean, I think the problem was some counselors and there wasn't understanding and agreement around this table. And so you're not modeling a, you're not, there's not a common message. Some counselors say that school board didn't meet the goal.
Oh, right. I think that, that, that hopefully this then changes that. The goal becomes.
Something achievable and understandable.
And it's based on your historical sort of track record. It's based on Tom's. It's a reasonable way to say out of the gate, we in good faith think this will deliver what we're talking about. And Tom, I, I don't think the three percent was completely random. I mean, the three percent has approximated wages and CPI growth and other things. I mean, in this same time period, seniors have been getting much less than that Medicare adjustments. And I think this year's, we've got those unusual items we're talking about, but the revale for some people is still pretty fresh. I mean, there are some people that have pretty significant increases, so clearly that's something that, you know, we need to speak to. So if everybody's, I mean, that, I think, I think the town council would support that approach. What, what do you guys think?
Can I just hear from, oh, sorry, it's fun, Sandy and Kate to get an opportunity to weigh in, whether or not you guys are supportive of this?
I think it's a great place to start. And I think you're going on some good data from the history, so I'm pleased with that. And I, you know, as a public person in my own town, I always want to see the needs based, you know, what, what does a budget include or what can't get into the budget? And then that's the hard conversations that, you know, as directors, we have to work towards and coming with a straight face, good budget. But I, I like this conversation. I think it's a good place to start and it's data-driven and if we work together and be collaborative, I think we'll get there.
Yeah, I'm very comfortable.
Sorry, good.
I'm, I'm comfortable with it because we've gone through this process and we've, we've, as a board team, we've decided that we feel it's achievable. We don't feel like we're shooting ourselves in the foot to commit to something like this. And then, you know, again, with the understanding that if, as Peter says, the you-know-what hits the fan, we come back and we talk about what happened and that's not what you said. But it's what you meant, isn't it?
Yes, it was what I meant, yes.
Um, yeah, I'm comfortable. I think it's a good way to start, really. I think it's more, for me, it feels more achievable.
It's measurable. I mean, one thing's different, you're specific about a first pass figure. And we were talking about three percent mill rate, but we had no way of reconciling to that. So we come in with three and six percent for the town and the schools respectively. People can hear that number and see what's in and out and we go from there.
And the guesswork's gone.
Yeah.
And then if there's something we need to add in or take out within that, I forgot, is it a three-week span? I don't even know, but.
No, I'll just add one more wrinkle. It's just the two-month or three-month delay between when the budget's finalized and when the tax rate's set. You know, people have their feet stuck in the sand. They don't even know that.
Right, no, sure.
You know, when the budget's approved, there's still this uncertainty. You're still not at three percent.
We've, we've made a good guess.
Yeah, your, your, your tax commitment on average has gone up 4.3%. But when you, when the final analysis happens and the new values added in and the tax rate set, you get there. That's three months down the road.
Oh, right. I mean, that's, but that's, when I say that three percent makes sense, because actually the three percent, when we calculate it, what it really, there's, there's another 1% to 2% organic growth. So that really covers.
So I was just saying, the final metric you could add is in second reading at adoption, that the neck, the, the tax commitment, which is the money that needs to be raised from property taxes. You, we can, we can derive a, a target for that as well.
That one makes me laugh. Because the word tax commitment and tax rate, I think, sound too, too much the same.
It's complicated.
Yeah.
But even when you're asking people to make the final vote on the budget.
Sure.
Um, still this uncertainty three months down the road.
But this might sound bad, but the budget's passed by then.
It's an ill, out of sight, out of mind.
But the tax commitment, which is the net budget, will change.
Yeah, I know. I, I totally understand.
So I just, but we don't call it tax commitment. We call it net budget, just what it shows on the, on the tax rate company.
And if you're, if you're saying school net budget, town net budget drives to total municipal.
Total net.
Yeah, it's pretty, we can, I already see the graphic that we can, you know.
Yeah, I think you could create something that would be fairly simple to understand. And maybe, you know, the bottom line of all that is what actually happened to the mill rate historically or the tax rate.
Is that something like the communication committees or this type of?
Correct, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, can actually, you want me to put something up here? She lives out of town. It's okay. I just live upstairs.
But, but what's, what's good about it, it does change the dialogue because then it can't be, well, they didn't deliver the three percent. If you deliver what you're asked to deliver, then it's a community dialogue about what do we do?
Yes.
And, and then it's really, as I think, you know, it's the teams that then have to go back and say, okay, the proverbial whatever hit the fan.
Anthem hit the fan and.
Anthem hit the, whatever it may be.
And now we need to make adjustments.
And now we need to do something.
And this is sort of a baby step in the process forward. I mean, Tom's idea may be great, but I think trying to just talk about one change.
Right.
In a manageable bite and see how it goes and see if it changes the dynamics and the conversations and all the things that have occurred and see if we can build on what we did last year.
Those, that, those extra data points too might be, I, like I, Paul said, I can see a graphic. I think it would be cool to have all of those sort of bits as an element of the budget presentations. And then, you know, the communications committee can decide, committees can decide what resonates the most.
So we're a week away from elections and there could be different committees that are assembled and, you know, within the month. I think, I know Don's point of having, pushing this conversation through the summer and fall was to at least advance that conversation for someone else to pick up and hopefully carry on with. So is there value, Don, and you intend as soon as next week to report out to the council?
Yeah, I.
So you can get, start to get this.
That was the intent. And I, I think, I think what would be helpful is if there's a joint resolution or some brief statement that could summarize what we, we feel is a consensus that was reached through this workshop exercise. And have, you know, have both bodies bring it, the same, how about we do the same statement at both bodies? Yes, yes.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
We're going to vote next week as well. I think, I don't necessarily think we need to vote on it. Ultimately, it's you guys kind of putting it down, but I think obviously.
Scheduling a council and school board agenda would certainly give it problems.
Right.
If you wanted to have a joint.
So is your feeling it has to run through committee, through, through finance committees first or we could go from, from here to?
We're all here.
Or we can. It's a sign, I would say, your, your, your last and only opportunity is next week.
Yeah, all right. So we cut to the chase. So you, just point of order because I don't know, are we, is this something we're going to vote on or is this something that we're?
Yeah, now that I think of it, I think you might be setting up a future council and board event in a month or two. If they disagree with that.
Right.
Then they'll have to take some action to disavow it.
So it's a non-action item.
Non-action item and.
Reporting out, I think, would serve its purpose.
I, I think just the fact that we could report out that we actually came to some agreement.
But let's, let's do it through a statement and let's have, just so it's like that way, both, both bodies are hearing the exact same thing.
So it's not a binding vote. It's a, here's what our finance committees think makes sense at this time and this is whoever.
It's our recommendation. After elections, we'll move forward on.
That the finance committees, whoever's on them.
Yeah.
Could it be something like we did with the advanced refunding while we didn't get customer approval is just tacit approval, if you will?
Yeah.
So you just need to frame it, Sarah, when you present it to the board, that it's, this is not an action item.
This is an agreement that we've, we've come to.
And this is our recommendation, yeah.
Do you want to pick one of each of, one from each body to craft it together?
Yeah.
I'm happy to take that at first if you want. I'm sure, just probably easier to have one person do it and everybody else.
It's probably the two chairs.
Yeah. So I'm sure we.
Do you have committee reports that you need to set as a sort of agenda?
Yeah, which will happen at the next week's meeting.
Yeah, so I mean, there's an ideal opportunity to do that.
Can we do it, can we do it before the committee reports? I feel like everybody's falling asleep on the committee reports. No, I'm serious.
You have to tell council, discuss that with your.
My input would be non-action items separate of a committee. To me, I want it to hold a lot more water than just.
To me, I want it to hold a lot more water than just the brief update.
Yeah.
Off the cuff update. That would be my one. So you still haven't opened your computer though?
Okay, awesome.
We just killed, did we just kill one and two together?
We did, we did. And, and you guys are.
It's a big, it's a big idea.
And everyone's feeling so chipper and.
We did something, we got something done.
Just, just to confirm. Just to confirm, it's net budget increased two point four.
Three.
Yeah.
Two point four three?
It's round, no, three.
Less than three.
Okay.
Less than three.
Less than three.
Yeah, less than or equal to three.
Oh, so we make it more generic, less than three percent and less than six percent.
Less than an equal to six.
No, no, less than, not equal to. That's where we dip our toes.
I put the thick line under it. I remember eighth grade.
Okay, cool.
Just on, quickly on the calendar, I just wanted to mention that we're trying to get our teams sort of lined up in the next two weeks for their in, in-school work. And our budget meetings. So I'll probably just talk with Tom about the end date to make sure that we're lined up for the public dates as much as possible.
It's kind of like you.
Yeah, I think, I've been toting calendars around and wiggling things. There's some weird calendar issues where dates shift a little bit, so.
We could put together a draft schedule.
Maybe that we could bring back to this team the next time around.
Sure.
Can I also ask, oh, agenda, I know for next time.
Yeah, you guys. To look, and maybe this is something that we just, it's impossible to work around, but to see if we can get the budget, the vote before our legal research.
Well, that was, that was one of the issues, because the school budget validation vote, if we do that with the primary this due is actually a week earlier. Because of the way the calendar falls, because it's the second Tuesday and last year, the second Tuesday was a whole week later.
But I'm sorry, what was your question? Have the.
Can we?
This was a year early voting had begun before we had actually finalized the budget.
Yeah. Was that even possible?
And so people had taken, I'd done early voting, but I actually know.
But they can't turn it back in until the budget has passed.
Okay.
So it's.
Since you know that, they can take the ballot, but they.
What does the ballot say?
But what does it say then?
It doesn't have a number in it.
It doesn't.
So do you approve the school budget?
Don't you have, what's the kind of operating?
Yeah, because it has come with the language. But that's posted, that's, that's a posting that goes up in.
But your point is people are asking, are receiving ballots before the.
Before they know the answer, right.
We'll have to look and see how that falls.
Maybe just something to look at.
It gets like forty-five days prior to the June primary.
That they can start voting?
Yeah.
Right, and we're tag teaming with the primary because it saves money and it brings people out. I mean, it's, it just makes sense.
I think we still ought to stay on that June primary date as the validation vote.
So then my other question would be to Todi, how many people actually hand in their ballots prior to the budget? Because if it's a significant number, then we may.
I assume she says you'd be the eighteen.
Yes, you'll, you'll.
I assume she will not, well, if people mail them though.
Do they just go in the box or something? I don't know. We should ask.
It's, it's fair, Sarah. It also may be, it also may be that the school board will have to call a special meeting. We could, you know.
Which we could get.
Well, not really, because the budget vote is public and people, there's like.
Yeah, generally speaking, the adoption, second reading adoption is the second meeting in May, whatever date.
Right, yeah.
Oh, and then we meet the following night.
It's roughly thirty days before the vote.
If the second reading is in, in week three, then usually what we'll do is we'll have the town council. We do have to have a school board meeting. If there's any changes at the town council meeting, we have to allocate those changes. So that's why we go for that second meeting in May. But the calendar is going to be against us this year because it's kind of squishy.
Let's, let's spend some time.
We'll have to first together.
We'll see what we can work around. Only way is a special meeting or maybe rolling it up.
We're just a little bit.
The first and second, second meeting.
Yeah.
So a little background before we move into number three. So you guys had obviously approved the use of, or we approved the funding for the eight corners project last year. So we wanted to come back, and I had briefed Dawn on this a couple of weeks ago, so he may have shared it with you. We wanted to come back and give everyone an update on where we are with expenses and spoil over. We are over. There is no action required at this point because not all the final numbers are in yet. But we just wanted to give you guys a heads up so you're aware and discuss what are some of our possibilities are in terms of funding overage. And sort of get a temperature check from you guys on, on what those options are. So that's the background. Okay, I don't know if you have any.
No, I would just repeat what Sarah just said, that we don't have all the bills in. So what you're looking at is a document that I pulled together, a version of for our finance committee meeting the last time we got together. And it's been just kind of a running update for me. The green blocks are bills that we've either already paid or we've got a purchase order out there, so it's committed. And then the yellow blocks are either quotes been given to us or an estimate of what the, the costs will be. And, you know, the short version of the story is that when we asked for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we didn't know what we didn't know. And one of the biggest drivers in pushing us over budget has been the fact that the fire marshal's office told us that they, that we needed to put in full new sprinkler system. And that meant we needed to put in a drop ceiling and a couple of things that we just really didn't expect in this modular building. We thought we could just connect it to the full, to the main building. There's a lot of detail on here. It's basically, again, just a running tally of what we've paid and what we've committed to. But if you look on the right side of the document, you'll see where we were given a budget to work with. And where we're significantly over on the modulars amount. The first section is the parking lot, which really wasn't a topic of discussion. That's just CIP money and we'll have to figure that one out on our own. But the site work, the second block and the modulars are the two hundred and sixty thousand dollars that were given to us from the school impact fees. So that's the piece that we're looking at and saying, oh, gosh, you know, we really didn't do a very good job of guessing what this would cost. And wondering if there's any way to come back and look for more there. On the backside, just for your information, we also have a small amount budgeted in our technology CIP, budget for F Y twenty and our furnishing CIP. And that's just, again, a running tally of what we've been spending and what's still to come in those areas. But the, the big problem is in the, just in that modulars block where there was, there was a lot more to it than what we expected.
So are these cost final costs or you still got more coming?
The green is final and the yellow is estimated. And we don't have all the bills in. We know, I think ninety-nine percent of, of what bills are coming, and that's where the yellow comes in. Unless something turns up. Todd has told me today that we're still on track to get the modulars open within the next two weeks. There's just a few finishing touches that need to happen. So as Sarah said, we weren't asking for any kind of decision at this point because we'd like to present you with final numbers. And that will happen with, you know, by the end of November certainly, when we get all the bills in. But I think the question that's in our minds is, is there any availability of further school impact fees to offset this? And if not, then we've got other work to do.
Okay, can I just ask you to, and we should, I should know this, but what, what did we approve?
Two hundred and sixty thousand.
Two sixty? And, and you're coming at a two seventy-one, is that it? Or what's the?
Sorry, so the, so this is, this was paid for out of our CIP.
Right.
So it's just this that was covered by impact fees. So if you add the expense here and here, you get two sixty.
Oh, okay.
And so we're over by about, let's just call it sixty thousand, two dash plus F.
Okay. Versus two sixty.
And we've served around here at three.
Twenty thousand dollars to stick.
Right, versus two sixty.
So, Kate, question?
Sorry, having off.
No, so I'm asking this on my behalf and Counselor Fucci's behalf, because I know he's interested in it. So you have a requirement to have an enclosed walking space from the main building, portables?
It's not, it's not a requirement. It's a, it's a safety decision, basically. And also a sort of a, what do you call it exactly? But a facilities decision, because it would be very difficult to get snow removal equipment and ice, ice treatment back into that forty-foot space between the two buildings.
If you had a stick-built hallway or?
No, we didn't.
If we had nothing.
If we had nothing.
So what we, what we started with was we hoped that we'd be able to buy a stick-built hallway.
Correct. And I feel like that was one of those topics of conversation through this process.
It was a topic of conversation.
Yep.
When we found that a stick-built hallway would cost us a lot more than what we had guessed and that we were already running over budget, we started looking at the canvas. Walkway cover, which is basically kind of like your fancy wedding tent that you get, you know, with the sides and the windows and so forth. And to put up one with top and sides would have cost us around twenty thousand. And our final decision was to put just the top and the poles and the supports that need to go with that. And so that's what you see on here. Ten thousand, seven hundred dollars main bay canvas is the last item in the green under that section of paid or contracted. And then twenty-seven fifty is the posts and mountings.
Does it have portable sides that you can zip and close during the winter time?
It has no sides at the moment.
Okay. And how much was the stick-built cost?
It was close to forty, I think. We had sort of budgeted, you see, I put thirty thousand for the connector when we made our first presentation about it. That was a little bit naive, I think, in terms of construction costs as of right now. But the, the big driving factor is that first of all, we saw the canvas connector at another school. We saw one being used and it was, it was nice, it was clean and it was, it was well-done and, and seemed quite safe at a much lower price point. And then also the fact that we were trying to save some money overall.
Is there concern about icing because that's exposed or is that not a concern?
Not if it's covered. If it's covered, it should be easy to treat. We can keep the snow off of it. I mean, it's not going to be ideal, but it's also not an ideal situation to begin with.
Is there discussions of putting the stick-built section in the next year's budget to upgrade it, so to speak? Or are we just?
Right now, the discussion is to put the sides on in the next year's budget. One of the issues with the sides is that Todd's not sure that they can even do the sides in the, in the colder weather.
Right.
Because we've waited till it's gotten to freezing, that there, there may be some structural problems with that, where they can do the sort of canopy tent piece. But the sides are evidently harder to fit when they're hard and the weather's cold. So what we've said right now is we're putting up the cover.
Yep.
Canopy and that we would plan to add sides to it.
And when you say sides, like a tough plastic side, right?
A canvas side.
A canvas side.
Right, like the original proposal. But we're not currently talking about anything stick-built.
The original proposal was canvas or it was stick-built though, right?
It was.
Okay.
It wasn't really determined, I think, but I think our perception was that we would be able to build something.
This is not, I'm just, this is me asking. So this is, how does that, how did we underestimate the cost of that stick-built something? Like who make, who, how does that, how did it go from twenty, thinking it was twenty, thirty thousand to?
Thirty thousand to forty thousand, construction costs, basically.
Okay.
I don't know, I, I think we've all kind of noticed what's going on with the economy.
Yeah, sure.
And even with the modulars, they've told us that what we purchased this year for a hundred and sixty-four thousand will probably cost us under eighty thousand next year because just construction costs are out of control right now.
I mean, for me, I mean, that, that was the question I was going to ask. So now this is two sort of really important capital projects that have been, if you looked at the turf field, which was budgeted a million and came back and asked for a million six. You know, I think the learning is as we look at these and put numbers forward, we're probably better off being conservative in at the ask. Or do we need to have a different process that we get these things under contract before we start? Because these are two pretty significant overruns.
Well, I think the, one of the time, one of the problems is timing, right? Because we were saying, oh, my God, it's an emergency. We're in, you know, April and we need to get this done. So we're running around not having actual quotes in place. We didn't have time to have the fire marshal's office come in and tell us what they think.
No, no, like, but I'm just saying, I think.
But I think that the advanced planning piece is critical, right? So if, if what we've done with F Y twenty budget is we've put in funding for two additional portables, classrooms at, at Eight Corners, plus two classrooms at Pleasant Hill. And so instead of saying in April, we've got a crisis, we can take our time and get not only the enrollment projections, which will let us know whether we need those in the first place, but also the, the clear and solid quotes that will tell us what it's going to cost to take care of the project. I mean, the good news is that at Eight Corners, if you do have to add two more classrooms, you've already got the infrastructure built. So.
That was, and that was the point of doing the extra slab.
The two pad, yes.
The slab is already built for two, you know, as far as the connections that have been made between the main building and the, you know, sewer systems and the water and the, and some of the HVAC connections to the main building, electricity, all of that stuff is kind of there. So it's almost of a, a little bit more of a plug and play for, for that second set of classrooms.
And my second question, for a lot of the contract work, do we, does it go out to bid?
Yeah, I was going to ask the same thing.
I mean, there's.
Depends on what it is. Respar was responsive to a bid, an RFP process.
I mean, was there others that bid against?
Interestingly, we only received the one bid. We had, I believe, three or maybe four contractors come out for the site visit. It's when we put the RFP out, we said, you know, come visit the site, come check us out, read the plan, see what the proposal is like. And at the end of the day, when the bids were, were due, Respar was the only one who bid on it.
Tight market.
Well, yeah. And, you know, to what we were saying earlier, we were talking earlier about the Wentworth project and how at that time in twenty thirteen, fourteen, we were, contractors were lining up and pleading with us to please give them some work. And now we've got a completely different situation where contractors are like, no, I don't need it. So.
So when will you be in a position to know what you'd need to ask for?
Middle of November.
For what the actual original bid?
Yeah.
I would say no later than the end of November. I'm hoping that, you know, if the work is done, the sooner the work is done, the sooner the bills come in and we can chase the bills. But yeah, no later than the end of November and probably a little bit sooner than that.
So do you expect the number to still, will still be about that same gap or is it going to get bigger or you have other contingencies? Because I know the impact fees was a big one, the fifty thousand that you found that you could, you could pay impact fees for that? Is that what I'm reading here for the pad?
No, the total two sixty that you guys allocated from impact fees was split from the pad to the modulars.
I see.
So it's split that, yeah.
Okay.
The total that you guys gave that, that we accessed for, from impact fees was two hundred and sixty.
Right, and that's just the way that the budget was broken out is obviously a super simplistic budget. The pad being in under budget, so that three thousand dollars dials down the sixty-four to sixty-one for a deficit. Because that's, that's what made up the total of the two sixty.
Yeah.
And, you know, to your question about how good we think our estimates are now, I think we're, we're pretty close. And if anything, we might come in a little bit less, but I, I won't promise that I know the bottom line number until they're up and running.
So you, the furnishings, your fourteen thousand dollars over, under budget on the furnishings, are we, are you going to roll that towards a sixty-four dollar shortfall, sixty-four thousand dollar shortfall? Or how's that going to work?
If we get the, you see the storage, we're looking at sort of cubbies and shelves and things like that for the, for the kids and for the teachers. Once everything's in there, we have funding available. And definitely we could charge something off to that. And for the tech, the same is true, but I'm not certain that we are actually going to have.
And why is there a student device line if the students are already there? So they're not going to, right, so the, the classroom technology.
Right, I think K two's the, what, the.
Oh, they're, are they in the?
They're on carts.
Okay, so they belong to the room?
They belong to the room?
Okay.
So you're right. I mean, if we're taking a kid from a room and we're putting them into another room, then it's not, it's not a cost. But remember that we added teachers and we added classroom furnishings to accommodate more kids.
Right.
So this is basically the overall operating budget that we would have had whether we had a room to put them in or not. This was to add.
No, I get that. No, I get that, right. But I mean, it, it, would it be, is the natural move, if, if these come in under budget, to apply them towards the sixty-four? Is that just gonna hap, that's gonna happen?
Yes.
If there is that money left?
Right, that was my understanding.
Yeah.
There'll still be that, right? So what, what would be interested here from you guys, what wanted, is there, are there still impact fees that we can access? And what do you think, what is your appetite, what do you think the town council's appetite would be for roofing?
So I guess a question just accounting-wise, but the bills need to get paid, so it must be going against your fund balance at this point?
So Kate has some notes on the far right-hand side with, you know, some contingency plans that we've discussed at the commu, at the, at our finance committee level. But, you know, shifting money and, and doing line item transfers doesn't, doesn't always feel good. And, you know, it puts our, it puts some of our accounts in not such great places.
Yeah, I think from an, an operating perspective, when you're talking about capital projects, really the norm is to spend what you haven't got yet and then to fund it later. And that's true of any project that we do in that current fiscal year. I get a budget of a hundred thousand dollars to do, five hundred thousand dollars to do roofing. And I spend the money out of the town's resources, and then Ruth goes out and does a bond issue in May, and we reimburse ourselves.
Spending on the dollar amount, I mean, we couldn't do the, the safety building, obviously, but.
Right, but our, our typical method is to float through operating funds and then fund capital expenses later in the year when we know exactly what they are, rather than going out and borrowing money and not having spent it yet.
I was gonna ask that, too. Are these fu, funds like, so we would say go up, I don't know, ten, ten thousand, one thousand dollars if we were able to charge those off, those yellow ones that are marked over here?
So, yeah, it's, I mean, it's almost a question of, of, as Sarah said, what's the appetite of the town to be able to tap into any, any, any more impact fees? Obviously, as Peter says, we're paying the bills, so if we have to cut off something else to make up that money in the school budget, then that's what we'll do.
Yes, I mean, I guess the question is asked, I thought at one point, I thought, because the, the school budget's different than a missile budget, that you could only spend money that got, as you did your allocations?
That's the general fund operating budget.
Right, so when you said could charge to operating that, so from that, you couldn't really charge it to operating, could you? Because it would, it would?
Yeah, I could, but I'd say, okay, well, now, Todd, instead of having money in that budget to do this contract-to-service work for the rest of the school year, you now have five thousand dollars less.
But it would mean you'd have to, but from that?
I wouldn't add to the operating budget.
But you'd have to cut services, though, right?
Yeah, that's right.
You'd have to cut, so that's, so that's what I'm trying to get at, that if we don't do something.
I'd have to make a trade-off. I'd have to save that money from doing something else.
Right, so you'd have to cut some other services you had budgeted to do it. If you get it from the impact fees, you wouldn't have to do that, so I guess.
That's exactly.
So I think when you ask the appetite, the appetite would be around what would be some of those things you could do, and what does that impact versus if it's gonna have a detrimental impact, then that changes the conversation. So I, I think that's the answer, as you guys get closer. It would be just a proposed plan about what you could do to cover it within the existing budget, and if you can't, then what do we do with impact fees and other things?
Right, there could be savings, too, in the budget.
A hyper approach, maybe you two.
Right.
Kind of develop certain areas, and there's a piece that you just can't, for whatever reason.
Right.
It's been so long since I looked at those impact fees, I'll, I'll get re-applying them to a quick balance, so.
Yeah, I gotta note that.
Kate, the, the HVAC CIP budget, when is that work actually happening? Is it, so a CIP budget for HVAC, right, for improvements on the HVAC, is that?
Do you mean, what are we currently doing on that?
Yeah, what, yeah, I guess, are, are we doing it right now?
Yeah, we've got, we've got work going on at the middle school, that's our big.
And do we know what that's what, like, can that absorb seven grand? Is that on budget, over budget, under budget?
That's all on budget, and it's also in a phased approach.
Yeah.
So part of the funding that we're using was to actually do a wholesale replacement of some of the mechanical systems and the controls.
Yeah.
But then part of it was also to replace items as they fail. And of course, you know, they fail at the worst possible time, and, you know, you, you hope that you have the, the funds available.
Yeah.
But there's a certain amount of contingency in that.
Yeah.
So, yes.
So would it, is it fair to say that it's not, it's not reckless to try to sneak that seven grand into the CIP, the HVAC CIP, or?
I wouldn't call any of it reckless.
Okay.
She would have added that note.
That's fair enough. People are getting, I'm dealing with, like, you know, accounting.
I've been called many a thing, but I'm not sure reckless is on the list.
All right, fair enough.
Maybe, maybe when I was twenty-two.
Yeah, right. I'm just, they'll call this so often that I just assume.
We're all, we're all there. No, I, I think that, you know, we're, what we're saying is.
Those are possibilities.
That we have possibilities, and that we would make whatever hard decisions we need to make, and we would do whatever we need to do to make this work. However, knowing that these impact fees exist for this purpose.
Sure, yeah.
I think we would be remiss in not coming back and saying, hey, we got the number wrong.
Right.
And can we still make the argument that that's a, an appropriate use of those markers?
So my temperature would be, like, I would, I, here's my temperature, then I'm done, so. Moving things to the operating budget, I don't think is, is smart necessarily, or I, that's not something I think we should do. I think if we have some funds, we could, we, you know, save the operating budget, but moving some things to some of the CIP, because those are still, my guess, are moving numbers and moving targets, and there might be some ways to come in under budget for those other projects, so. My temperature would be, leave the operating budget alone, but to see if there's ways to save the other CIP items. That's my personal temperature.
Kate, can I ask a question? Say we did move, move seven thousand dollars to the HVAC CIP, and then something failed. Are the impact fees available for projects like a failed boiler?
That was.
Well, that's a good question. I mean, I, I think the impact fees are not part of our budget, right? So I think that.
I think the question is, they're limiting it, what they could be used to.
Yeah, it's very specific.
It's fixed, it's fixed structures, right? I mean, it's bricks and mortar.
Meet the demand, meet the new demand of.
Growth and blah, 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 so.
No program, maintenance, yeah.
Yeah, so unless it's an HVAC.
Okay, that's a fair, yeah.
Unless it's an HVAC.
We can make that.
They're not allowed to fail, because we just got those.
So I guess.
But, yeah, I see what you're asking, right?
We couldn't use, we couldn't use the impact fees.
We can't then later on go and tap the.
We couldn't use the impact fees to back up a decision that we made in the CIP.
Thank you for clarifying what I was.
If it doesn't apply, because the CIP, I mean, because the impact fees are only accessible for very specific capital programs.
And the portable part because of?
Yes.
Direct impact. So I guess my temperature would be, certainly come back, but look at the operating budget. If there are some things where you can make trade-offs that aren't gonna really impact, you know, things may, timing or planning or other things, if there's ways to do it without impacting delivery of services within the operating budget, that'd be the, the first place. And then come back to us with what, what might be the, the remaining nuts, and, and we can talk about that. I would think.
Don, where?
Yeah, I, I might up there as well. I think that you've done a lot of the work, hopefully, try to draw it down to the smallest scale as possible, and I appreciate the, the heads up on this, it'll help us get our heads around it and support you and, and what you feel you need to do. But I, it is another reminder, though, it's just that people have referred to the other, to the turf and other projects. It's, in this environment, things run over, right? They run over by materials and by labor, and, and also because we haven't really gone far enough with detailing out what it's gonna take to, to build the thing. So, you know, the walkways, and now we got sidewalls instead of stick-built runway and stuff like that. So I, you know, whatever we can do, and I know we brought a tremendous pressure, and this thing was a mad dash to begin with, but, you know, the more time we spend on the front end, really trying to drill down on what we need, it'll, it'll save us pain and suffering in the end, if that's possible, so. That's just the learning I have from this. It's got an order.
I know that.
That's true for all capital projects, as we estimate stuff, it's.
Todd and I were talking actually just, just recently about what our timetable will be for, do we need more portable space? We have money in the twenty, FY twenty budget, which is great, because we don't have to do the emergency thing. If we need to order them, we can order them sooner and not have, and, and be clear on what the costs are gonna be. But I think that's a, a conversation for this finance and long-range planning, about what is enrollment looking like, and what, what really are we gonna need?
Remind me, Kate, what's in the FY twenty budget? It's two more for Eight Corners and two for Pleasant Hill?
That's right, yeah. Pleasant Hill has.
And the problem is, was only if needed.
Right.
Yes.
And Pleasant Hill already has a slab bill that was there from, from back in the day. So it's a little bit different story. Not to get into the weeds, but it wouldn't be connected, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't have running water and some of the things that the Eight Corners wanted to.
This is really tough on this modulars thing, because it seems like we really sort of have institutionalized modulators, and, you know.
Yeah.
After, and I, and I know there are a lot of reasons for that, but just.
Something about that, that does bother me, you know.
And I know it comes down to dollars and cents, and big, big schools' projects are expensive, but gee whiz, you know.
In a five-year timeframe, right?
Yeah.
I mean, just the lag period between you, when you need it, and get it built.
So all y'all listening, come to the building steering committee. Yeah, steering committee.
Steering committee, building steering committee met last week.
So, okay, I gotta ask, so I got one more question then. Why aren't we, since we have a hundred and sixty allocated for the portables that we don't know if we need or not on that same slab, why aren't we allocating the overage to that one?
Because we won't know if we need them to be able to.
Yeah, but what, but then why not come back and ask for impact fees for that?
So do we, so we move forward and use what we've already moved forward for those springtime?
You're like, why wouldn't we do that? Because then you're asking for impact fees for portable again. And it's a very direct ask for the growth.
It's an option.
I think we could do that, yeah, yeah.
Because then if you don't need the portables, then yay, we're actually over budget, under budget on this whole process. And it would give credence to the fact, we keep saying, like, if we need them, if we need them, but everybody, myself, I feel like I'm hearing, like, yeah, of course, we're gonna need them. Like, it would be nice to actually say, okay, we actually don't know if we need this money, so let's use it.
We do run the risk of if we do need them, having the same sort of hurry-up issue and ordering them late. So I think we could do that, but there would have to be some sort of.
You guys are super on top of it, right? I mean, no, I'm being serious.
I guess, I don't think, I guess, we, would we need to have a full town council B O workshop? Would we need to, like, go through the steps that we did last time, or could we expedite some of the process?
I'm sure we could expedite, I mean, we've done, I mean, you could literally change the slide, you know, the slide you're managing. Do you think that's, what do you think about that idea?
I don't know, I mean, I guess, just from a technical point of view, is there any?
I was thinking that same thing.
I mean, it's, I mean, it's just from the.
I understand.
I mean, it is.
CIP budget, right.
Right, the council has voted that this is our CIP budget. And I guess the question is, to what extent does the council believe that they are, that we are adhering to every detail that was outlined in that budget? Because the budget does say, the budget document says, this is for.
Modular A and modular B.
So you could go, you could go with the timetable that says Eight Corners' modulators, which is pretty generic, or you could go with a discrepancy.
The budget would be, so long as it's used for the, the general budget authorization. I mean, if you were to go out and buy a school bus with that money, I, that, that doesn't work, but I think you're.
It's all under the same umbrella.
Same intent. Intent and authorization.
And if it's needed for Eight Corners, and that's the one that we're worried about over running, I think that, I would use that one, and not like the Pleasant Hill one.
Right, we're using an Eight Corners portable budget to cover an Eight Corners' budget overage. We also don't know if we're gonna use the second half of the budget. And in addition to that, we could run, if we don't do it, we keep the current course, where we might be running into coming back and asking for money for this overage and asking for overage for this phase two.
As opposed to just.
And as opposed to if we let it.
And it would be part of next year's.
If we let it play its course, it's one ask.
Impact fees at the end.
Because we might say, we might be looking at, oh, the portables were over budget. Oh, now we're gonna build the second ones, which is fine, because we approved them. Oh, those are over budget now, too. Wouldn't it be nice if we took care of this, and then just had one ask down the road? You, I mean, you just said yourself that the portables that we order could be a hundred and eighty, not a hundred and sixty.
Right, but we budgeted a hundred and eighty.
Oh, I thought we're one sixty, okay, so one.
We, we budgeted the fifteen percent increase. Maybe we learned something.
So I, I think a long-winded answer to the appetite, the temperature, would be, there's probably a solution, but we probably, you know, as we get closer, need to kind of talk those things through. I mean, I think, I mean, technically, for me, being once upon a time an accountant, it's like, okay, if you have a capital budget for a fire truck, it's for a specific.
Is it for the wheels of a different fire truck?
Yeah, so I mean, I just, so part of this is also perception. I mean, either way, the funds need to be made available, it's just what's the best way to do it and the optics?
Okay.
And we can have that conversation. But I think, I think it would.
Sense.
Yeah.
No chances of this is gonna be, at some point, within next year's budget process anyway, so the overage may not be there, it'll just be a budget item.
Right. Well, no, that's good.
Whether it's.
Tom, Tom, the facial expression that I wasn't, I wasn't quite sure what that was.
No, I, I do, too. Do you mean because we won't be installing the new portables if we do? We won't be installing them until the spring, so we should budget more for that?
Well, if you'll have, if you need more money, you'll have the whole budget process to put it in the budget.
That's true.
FY twenty-one.
Right.
Which we would then be able to spend after.
Whether you either fund with bonding or you fund from.
So if we, even if we get the portables, the new portables, if we order them and get them much earlier, then we could still have summertime money to finish the job. It's what it's called, July one. It's like, you know, it's tea money.
It's tea money, I like that.
Yeah, what was your item, it was kind of grandly stated, you know, future mission purpose of this, this group? It could be as simple as, do we need a meeting? You know, or do we envision this group, you know, going forward or meeting on a monthly basis? But I really, it's just, it was just a reasonable break point.
I think we'll need another meeting, and maybe not necessarily for the budget, but potentially discuss this. But I think we can probably wait to schedule it until the new committees are formed, because I don't know if they're gonna look the same.
So after new committees?
Yeah, I think that's fair, right, after the new committees are formed?
Yeah.
What are those usually done?
I voted on first week of December.
So that gives us a slight reprieve and reconvene.
And then what?
We should have final numbers, right?
By that point?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And so our committees are usually set just a smidger earlier than that, is that right? Or is it about the same?
Um, maybe the, yeah, maybe it's the second meeting of November. That sounds right.
Which actually. Because you elect the chair and then you.
Well, no, I, we, did we elect the chair the first night?
Oh, it gets kind of close, because November.
He is a blur.
And, and it may have been special circumstances, because there weren't any committees on the school board at the time.
We didn't have any, right?
There weren't any people.
There's no people.
Um, so the action on the, leaving the, the table is that Sarah's gonna write a draft of, of message that we're gonna both deliver, joint resolution.
And how about just Sarah and Peter work on that?
Yeah, that's my, John.
We don't need six chefs in this, I mean, sorry, uh, Dawn, Sarah and Dawn work on that, I'm sorry, Dawn. We just don't need so many chefs in the kitchen, because of the state.
And do you guys want us to message that to both town council and Board of Education? Or we can share it at our respective meetings, how do you guys want to distribute that?
Finish it, and then we'll share it, and then share electronically.
Share again.
Yeah.
I mean, if it was jointly operated.
They're sharing.
I think that would be great, and, you know, here, this'll be discussed, but here's, hurly adds up of what we're thinking, and.
But we need to do this on Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Yeah.
So we need it before we're.
Yeah.
And then.
Day after election day.
Yeah.
Sixth.
And then if your question was, and I think I'd defer it to, to the group, I think, a joint finance committee, it's taken a while for us to kind of come together and to start. I think it'd be a shame not to continue it, because I think it could, as it develops and as the relationships develop, it could be helpful going forward, but that both sides would have to feel that way.
I a hundred percent agree.
Me, too.
I just think.